At this time, I will convene the City Council, and City Council is a successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency for the city of Grand Terrace. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a Request to Speak form. It's available at the entrance, and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. So we are officially called to order. We have our invocation by Pastor Andy McCray of Azure Hills Seventh-day Adventist Church. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to follow.
Gracious God, we're thankful today to be in this place, a place where people have gathered to do the business of this good city. Be with us tonight as we hear reports, as we continue to plan our future. Guide our leaders and all of us as citizens that we may work together for the common good in this good place. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Andy and Councilmember Mitchell. May we please have a roll call?
Yes Mayor. Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Present.
Mayor Protem Robles?
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. And we will start in with our special presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation from the Lions Club. It is their scholarship program, and we have some recipients here for those scholarships. If Lion President Deborah Soulamazian of the Grand Terrace Lions Club would please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and community members. I'm Deborah Soulamazian from the Grand Terrace Lions Club, and on behalf of the Grand Terrace Lions Club, I am here to present Grand Terrace High School with scholarship certificates. Our budget this year was $4,000. We had 14 students apply, and every one of them was worthy of a scholarship. Therefore, every applicant will receive one. The applicant, the certificate will read as follow. Congratulations, you have been selected to receive one of the scholarships from the Grand Terrace Lions Club. Your scholarship will be mailed directly to your school that you will be attending. We wish you the best of luck as you continue your educational path. I'm going to have Lion Mr. Steve Barton help me out as he calls your name. You students, if you would come up, I will hand you your certificate. Thank you.
I apologize in advance if I mispronounce any names. The first is Kassar Nawat. Abraham Centilian. Jacob Navarez.
And there we are. Again, I'd like to take opportunity to thank the community for sponsoring a lot of the events that the Lions Club do due to their generosity, were able to do things like this. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Madam Lion President Deborah, for coming and sharing this particular program with us and the community. Congratulations to all the students who put in your names and the scholarships that you received, and best of luck to you as you go off to your futures. Councilmembers, did you want to make comments? Councilmember Hussey?
Congratulations, and enjoy your journey. Just stay at the Brooks, you know, it's going to pay off in the end. And for the parents, I've just been through there paying for the tuition, so I'm with you on this. Just be positive for a model like you have been. Your kids, they got their scholarships, so apparently the parents and the grandparents and family members have been a positive role model. But congratulations, and have fun. Let's study.
Any other, Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you Mayor. Lions, Deborah, and everyone else that's a Lion, you guys make me pretty darn proud to live in this community. You continue to do very nice things for our residents and for our, I guess some of these students may not even be residents within Grand Terrace, but that's pretty awesome that you guys can do fundraisers to be able to help with that. So thank you all very, very much. And to our students, congratulations and the best of luck in your future endeavors, and good job to our parents out there. Thank you so much.
One last thank you to our Colton Joint Unified School District Board Member Joanne Thoreen Ojeda for being here tonight. That shows a lot of support from the board, and that's very, very welcome. And of course, you're welcome to come anytime and be here with us. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our second item, which is a presentation of Healthy Grand Terrace. This is an update, so Pastor McCray will come forward again.
Thank you Mayor and Council. The Healthy Grand Terrace Committee has been privileged to work closely with the Foundation of Grand Terrace, and we've had a year of a lot of events and programs and things. It would never have happened if we hadn't had an intern with us who just stepped right in and just did everything and more than we expected. Ladi Kadham, Kadham, excuse me, is an intern in the Randall Lewis Fellowship from, and a graduate student in the School of Public Health at Loma Linda University. Some of us were at her graduation recently and were surprised, and yet not surprised, to discover that she received the President's Award. The one student every year that is selected, it's the highest honor given to a student on the campus. It reflects high scholastic achievement, deep community service, a person who seems to display the university's ideals in all that they do, and who they see as an agent of change, not only in the time that she has spent, but as they forecast her future. And Ladi received that award, and we're very proud of her, and I'd like to give her a She is going to give a report tonight of what we have done together as a committee with her help in Healthy Grand Terrace. Ladi?
Thanks for that introduction. I wasn't expecting that Pastor Andy. Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and community residents, good evening. As Pastor Andy just explained, I'm going to be giving kind of a brief background regarding kind of how Healthy GT just quickly got its start, and basically what we've done this past year. It's been a really productive and fun-filled, but also very busy year for us. And so I'm going to be giving a little bit of background as to what was done this past about 10 months, almost one year now. So the San Bernardino Healthy Communities Initiative was actually created back in 2006, kind of with this goal of creating a central point for all cities in San Bernardino County, you know, for a point of contact for health-related initiatives and issues. Cities would be able to be a part of this program, and they'd be able to get connected to health resources, and kind of create a better, healthier lifestyle for their residents. And so this was created back in 2006. In my opinion, great, great organization, great program actually for San Bernardino County. And Grand Terrace actually wasn't a part of this Healthy Communities Program last, you know, it hasn't been part of it since 2006. And so the Foundation of Grand Terrace and its members kind of saw that, okay, why is Grand Terrace not a part of the Healthy Communities Initiative? We got to get to be a part of this great program. And so Pastor Andy and Sally McGuire specifically, you know, they got all the paperwork together and got Grand Terrace accepted as, you know, a part of this Healthy Communities Initiative. And so one of the great things about the Healthy Communities Initiative is not only you're kind of starting and laying this foundation for creating a healthier city for, you know, for your residents, but you get connected to the Randall Lewis Health Policy Fellowship, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) located in Rancho Cucamonga. And its basic mission statement, or goals, I should say, is to connect graduate students to these Healthy Communities Programs throughout San Bernardino County. And so, you know, San Bernardino gets a healthy intern, you know, for their entire school year, same city of Fontana, et cetera. And so Grand Terrace was able to get matched with a fellow or, you know, a healthy intern. And I was fortunate enough to be the intern for this, you know, the first inaugural, I guess, year for Healthy Grand Terrace. And so I got extremely lucky to be matched with the Foundation of Grand Terrace, as well as the city, in the healthy efforts. And so, as Pastor Andy mentioned, I am, I was a Master of Public Health student at Loma Linda University School of Public Health, and I was studying, you know, what are the best ways that we can create healthy communities, and best ways of outreach and health education, and, you know, creating a healthy city, and, you know, in theory, it sounds like it can be something that can be done quite easily, but it's really challenging. And, you know, what does health mean, you know, to a specific person? It varies. Everyone has a different definition of health. And so I was fortunate enough to get matched with Grand Terrace during the second year of my master's education, and yeah, just graduated last week. And so I wanted to give you a brief overview of what we did do this past year because it was quite a lot. And so one of the first events last year, it actually kind of started with Grand Terrace Community Day in 2014, where the theme for Community Day, Community Day, excuse me, was Health and Fitness. And so that was kind of like the kickoff, informal event for Healthy Grand Terrace. Okay, let's get started, let's get this conversation regarding health started. And it was last year's Community Day. And, you know, we just had the Grand Terrace Community Day a few weeks ago, theme being "Let's Get Moving." And so kind of the hope for future Grand Terrace Community Days is that there will be this kind of health central theme that will be, you know, continuing for, you know, years to come. That's what we hope. And so one of the first events after the Grand Terrace Community Day last year was having a three-day Health and Fitness Weekend. This was September 26th, 27th, and 28th of last year. It actually goes right in line with, the last week of September is kind of the National Health and Fitness Community Week across the nation. And so we kind of wanted to do that in line with the rest of the states. And so Friday, September 26th, we had like a Health and Fitness vendor fair. It was at Azure Hills Church. We invited a lot of local health and fitness organizations to come and kind of, you know, talk to residents about what they do, and get them connected to health resources, you know. And, you know, there was free flu shots, we had, you know, medical massage, we had a lot of, we had about 20 organizations come and, you know, speak to residents regarding their various services. Saturday, September 27th, was actually a day where the local fitness organizations in town, like Zumba, CrossFit, were offering free fitness classes for residents to come and try, see if they liked, you know, what they saw, maybe be able to join the organization in the future. And then Sunday, September 28th, it was the Lions 5K Walk, and we kind of tagged along with that event, and once the, you know, runners were done with their 5K, they'd be able to stop by the Healthy GT booth, in addition to a lot of different booths after the run. And we auctioned off a Fitbit, and we were able to kind of offer free healthy snacks. So, and kind of get the conversation started. What is Healthy Grand Terrace? How can I get involved? So that was where we kind of started, speaking to community residents. And so from there, we kind of wanted to form a Healthy Grand Terrace Board. And how, you know, how did we kind of start doing that? Well, we formed an organizational chart, which had, it was complete with board members that we had, over the, you know, months from October to about February, we invited various people from the community. Are you interested in being a board member? Are you interested in, you know, joining the Healthy Grand Terrace cause? And then we also kind of formulated our pillars of focus as well. And so I'm going to give you a little bit of a foundation as to what, who our board members are, and also what our pillars of focus were for this past year. And so as you all may know, Pastor Andy is our chairman for Healthy Grand Terrace, and you know, he's been a pastor for the past 38 years, and he's, you know, currently, the pastor, I believe, was it six years? Six years with Azure Hills Church? Yeah, and so we're going to really miss him. We're going to miss him very much, and I know the entire, entire community will as well. Our community coordinator for Healthy Grand Terrace, Ms. Sally McGuire. Just a little bit about her, you know, she's past president of Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce, and Grand Terrace, she's a Grand Terrace business owner. She's currently the executive director of the GT Chamber of Commerce, and is a board member of the Foundation of Grand Terrace, specifically community events. I got that all right, right Sally? Yeah, I mean, those are only a few of her accolades. I could keep going on all night. But Ms. Casey Crawson, she's our marketing coordinator. She's a, you know, Grand Terrace business owner, owner of Cow Skate and Up Dog. And she does, you know, a lot of our social media and all of our, you know, great, great marketing, because we all know it's kind of hard to make flyers, I know that I can't. Dr. Ernie Medina is actually the Randall Lewis Health Policy Preceptor. So I worked closely with him, you know, regarding, you know, different items, and he kind of oversaw, in addition to Sally and Pastor Andy, you know, all the activities from a day-to-day basis on, you know, as to what I was, what I was doing with the organization. And he is actually the executive director for Center of Nutrition, Healthy Lifestyle, and Disease Prevention at Loma Linda University School of Public Health. Another one of our board members, Ms. Yvonne Williams, she's an operating surgical room nurse, veteran of the U.S. Army 349th General Hospital, and she served 10 years, Desert Shield, Desert Storm, excuse me. Another board member of ours, Dr. Shirley Tan, is an anesthesiologist, and as well as a faculty member at Loma Linda University School of Medicine. She has a huge passion and interest in nutrition, and so we've been utilizing her skills and expertise regarding nutrition and healthy lifestyle. And Ms. Claudia Cooley, she is a bestselling author, certified health coach, founder of CC Inc., and Rev Up for Success, and she's also a professional success and life coach, and owns her own company as well, Professional Success and Life Enrichment Company. Mr. Manny Baltiera, he is a retired San Bernardino County Probation Corrections Officer, serving in that role for about 11 years, and he also was assigned to San Bernardino County Detention Assessment Center. And he actually, this summer, will be hosting and facilitating quite a number of different workshops, so please make sure you keep your eyes and ears open for that, something called The Parent Project, and Alive at 25, where he, you know, focuses on speaking with youth and engaging and teaching youth regarding a number of different issues. And so, and actually, the last seven years, just to give you a little bit more about him, he's, he's been assigned to the Youth Justice Center, where he's taught anger management classes, you know, different classes about true and seeing intervention, et cetera. And lastly, our last board member, Ms. Karen Contreras, she's a retired registered nurse, and she's a current nursing professor, and has worked actually with the Healthy Cities Fontana Initiative. So she brings her expertise regarding healthy cities to Healthy Grand Terrace as well. And just to kind of tell you real quickly, we do have pillars of focus for our organizational chart, so, you know, what are pillars of focus? They're essentially what our main kind of themes and areas of interest are for Healthy Grand Terrace. Four of them being social, mental, and physical health, education and family support, nutrition, and community safety and disaster preparedness. So a lot of our initiatives, a lot of our programs are kind of centered and geared toward these pillars. One of the first things that we did, this was back in October, we kind of created a community-wide survey, which we created online and disseminated to the city, and it was pretty great, because this is a survey that was geared toward gauging resident concerns and perceptions about health and fitness, both personally and in the city as well. We received our first response on October 13th, and we, our main goal was to get at least 150 responses by February, and we surpassed that, which is great, and we're about, at about 200 responses right now as of June 2015. And one of our big initiatives is to continue getting response and feedback from the community. What is it that you, you know, believe health and fitness to be here in Grand Terrace? How can we improve? And these are different, this is the type of collective input that we'd like to get for, you know, a future strategic plan in the future. And questions like, how healthy is GT? How healthy do you believe your city to be? And just to give you one stat, residents, 52% of residents thought Grand Terrace was somewhat healthy, 31% thought, you know, Grand Terrace, we're a pretty healthy city. And so kind of just gauging and addressing that data that we received. And the top four kind of concerns for residents here in Grand Terrace, public safety was number one, physical activity was number two, obesity was third, and fourth was smoking and exposure to secondhand smoke, making sure that there are interventions to combat that. And lastly, nutrition and outdoor recreation, you know, finding resources and connecting people to, you know, the resources to get increased nutrition, or more education about nutrition, and more ways to be more physically active outside. So what did we do? What did we do with this, all of this data? Well, we presented all of our findings at a first community forum back in February. We titled it Family Fun Health Night, it was on February 26th, it was a Thursday night. Residents were able to come, they got to learn more about Healthy Grand Terrace, they were introduced to the board members, and they received information about what we found from the survey. And at the end of the night, residents kind of created a community priority list. So we had different roundtables split off, and people were able to discuss, you know, what are you, what are your top priorities and issues here, and what would you like to see changed, or what do you like about what's going on? And we were able to create this big list up on the blackboard, and if you'd like more information about that, you can come and speak to us afterwards, you know, if you want to be getting involved, or getting more information about what was discussed at that meeting, we'd be happy to speak with you. Our second community forum was on April 7th, and this was geared toward inviting local health and fitness organizations, essentially our community stakeholders, to come together. So we invited health and fitness organizations, representatives from Grand Terrace High Schools, as well as, you know, the Inland Empire Biking Alliance. And we brought them all together, and we asked them, you know, what are your top three priorities for your organization, and how can Healthy Grand Terrace essentially support these initiatives? And so it was a great night of kind of great discussion, and sparking of ideas, and a lot of networking and collaboration. And so that was a really productive forum. And so I know I've been, you know, discussing all of the things that we did this past year, and, you know, we were extremely busy. In addition to, you know, all the different workshops and forums that we did have, we did participate in the homeless point-in-time count back in January. We kind of helped with this nationwide initiative that the county does every year. You know, the city has done it in the past, but we helped this past year, kind of went around the city and helped a county representative with this, you know, with the county of this cause. And hopefully we get to continue to participate in the future, and kind of just add Grand Terrace numbers to this community-wide initiative. We also held a nutrition class on, back in April at Azure Hills Church. It was led by Dr. Shirley Tan, basically how to shop smart in the grocery store, and there was a food presentation as well, which was wonderful. And now we have Mobile Fresh, which is, you know, coming to Grand Terrace twice a month. I don't know if some of you have seen the big old bus that's been coming to the senior center, but it's every other Tuesday from 9:30 until 10:30 in front of the senior center. Residents are able to come and purchase locally grown fresh fruits and vegetables at a reduced price, and we've been hearing really great feedback about that, so that's been exciting. Going forward, you know, it's been such a great experience being able to be a part of an organization during its inaugural year. I've learned a lot. I know the rest of the board members have learned a lot, you know, throughout this foundational year. And going forward, we're just wanting to get more volunteers involved, getting more people involved, adding people to our specific committees that we're hoping to form, and continuing to receive feedback from the community through the survey, through different forums, and over the next year, just, you know, continuing that, kind of just our fire, continuing that spark that, you know, making sure residents are excited about getting healthier, excited about living a more holistic and healthy life. And so, yeah, it's been a really great experience, and I specifically just wanted to thank the Foundation of Grand Terrace for such a great opportunity, and, you know, filing the paperwork and making sure that this happened. And special thanks to Pastor Andy and Sally McGuire, and, you know, I was working with them very closely, and I've not only learned so much from them, but I can see the passion that they, you know, live, live with every day, and how committed they are to their cause. Start with Pastor Andy, you know, I wanted to thank him for, I know this is going to sound very cheesy, but for his warm heart, his endless humor, and ability to see the bright side of any and all situations. You know, any conversation that you have with him is kind of laced with humor, and he kind of hits you with these elements of truth every time. And you leave the conversation, you're like, wow. I remember leaving a ton of conversations with him, and he comes off as this funny guy because he is funny, but he hits you with those elements of truth, and has taught me a lot, quite, quite a lot along the way. And with Sally, Ms. Sally McGuire, who I've had the pleasure of working with every single day that I came into the office. I saw her, and we have had hours long with the conversation regarding what can we can do, how can we make things better? And I just wanted to thank her, because she has this endless work ethic, and she has this ambition and this ability to just give 110% to every single thing that she's committed to. And we all know she's committed to a lot of different programs and initiatives here in the city. And so I just wanted to thank her because she's an inspiration, like you're able to see how much she does, and she does it really well. And being able to learn from that sort of model has really pushed me to kind of work as hard as I could within this short amount of time. And so it's been proven to be an extremely valuable experience, not just working with these two, but working day in and day out with the city. It's a great community with residents who are really excited about health, and just excited about being Grand Terrace residents. You know, I had the choice of going to neighboring cities, and I wanted to come here to Grand Terrace. I wanted to work here, and it's been an absolute pleasure, and I'm going to really miss the community and miss everyone, and thank you again for the opportunity, and looking forward to what Healthy GT will become in the next five to 10 years. Thanks.
Thank you so much for all your hard work, and for choosing our community. Congratulations to you on the recognition you've received, and I know our community has benefited considerably from your hard work and efforts. Thank you very much. Councilmembers? Okay, all right. And thank you for coming and giving this overview to us, I really appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to our consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there, I don't have any requests from the public council members, are there any items you'd like to remove?
Madam Mayor, if we may, I'd like to remove check, check number 71572 to Roque Paving for just discussion.
Okay, we'll remove the check register right now, item four. We'll also remove item three, which is the approval of minutes for regular meeting from May of 26. Is there a motion for the balance?
A motion to move the balance.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion passes. Five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Thank you. Okay, item three was minutes from May 26th. There were a couple of corrections that were given to us on the dais. I'm going to mo- I'm going to motion for approval of those minutes if my colleagues are in agreement with the changes.
Are you looking for a motion?
A motion for approval, so if I could get a second?
A second.
Okay. There's been a motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes. Five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNaboe voted aye.
Thank you. Okay, and the check register, Councilmember Wilson, you had the question on the particular check number. Would you repeat that check number again, please?
71572, Roque Paving Incorporated, Street Maintenance for Main Street. I just wanted to get a little explanation of what this item was for. I guess I didn't, I guess I missed it. It's, looks like paving on Main Street.
Yes, and Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, this item was to repair a portion of Main Street roughly approximately adjacent to Taylor Street. So it's on the north side, which is within our city limits. We do have a paving contract with Roque Paving, which we fund out of our gas tax, but that was, that work that was done there on Main Street. And also, there was one of our local streets that also needed some street repair, and I could provide particulars at a later date, but generally, that's what that was for.
Not necessary, actually, Mayor. I guess this is part of a larger question that I have, and that is, I think there was some discussion early on about the concept of some kind of a master street maintenance plan or game plan. And I think, it was probably four or five years ago, Barton Road got slurried. And I asked the question at the time, nobody was here then, but I asked the question at the time, why are we doing that? And the then-city manager said, well, because we want to make it look pretty. Making it look pretty sometimes doesn't really suit what we need to do, so. And it also is a larger part of what's happening with the repair after the water blow-up over on Michigan and Barton. And in connection with that, I'd just like to ask the question, Sandra, you could tell me, did we ever discover what it was that blew up there?
Yes, it was a, it was a main water line.
Big water main?
Yes.
Correct? And is it something that, is there, has there been any discussion with the Water District about some kind of a game plan? Because I know, well, at least in the last 35 years, they've been repairing things as they have to. You know, water services have been repaired when the corp stop comes off or something like that. But do they have some sort of a master game plan on how they're going to replace their lines? Because look at Los Angeles, I mean, they've got it all over the place.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, my understanding is that the Water District has gone in and replaced, they're fairly new, relatively speaking. And we can provide more information either on the report backlog or in some other capacity, but that's my understanding, they have gone by, gone through and replaced all their lines.
Okay, so your understanding is they've replaced all their main lines and so on?
Yes.
Mayor, if I might?
Mr. City Manager.
For the record, G. Harold Duffy, the City Manager. The particular pipe that broke on that time was a faulty pipe. It had been replaced, I believe, in the late 90s. And so what we can do is, we can always bring in the Water Department, sit down with them, look at their master plan for their capital improvements. In addition to, we will be coming back to the Council in the next probably 60 to 90 days with a strategy for our pavement index, basically measuring the condition of all of our roads and coming up with a long-term master plan.
Thank you.
Would you like to move the check register?
Yes, I'd like to move the check register for a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second that. Please move.
Motion passes. Five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNaboe voted aye.
Thank you. Our next item is public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. I may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment or may request a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I have one request to speak from Mr. John Gady from Assemblymember Brown's office.
Thank you, Mayor McNaboe, and good evening, councilmembers. On behalf of Assemblymember Brown, each year, as many of you know, Assemblymember Brown honors six men in the community who have distinguished themselves as leaders, as pillars of the community, as individuals you can depend on. They're not always honored, but she finds them. They're nominated by wonderful people because they are wonderful leaders in the community. And I would just like to mention on behalf of this person from Grand Terrace that sometimes they are members, they are, they are members of water boards. Sometimes they are officers in Lions Club. Sometimes they help initiate and start war memorials where there is no, where there are no war memorials. And sometimes they, sometimes they are veterans who have served this country. And those are only some of the things that help describe, and sometimes they are spouses of mayors. And I just want to say, since I've been gotten so lucky to be assigned on behalf of Assemblymember Brown to the city of Grand Terrace, I cannot imagine being assigned to any other city. So thanks for having me for this brief time. That person, that honor, that man who was selected by Assemblymember Brown to be the Grand Terrace representative of a man of distinction for this year is Jim McNaboe. He's known that for a few weeks, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody else did, and everybody else already knows what a special person he is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gady, and thank you to Assemblymember Brown for continuing to recognize our community. I appreciate that. All right, are there any other requests to speak? If there's somebody else that would like to speak? You may still put in a request to speak form, but I see nobody moving, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and come back to our council for their reports. Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city staff, for all your hard work you've done. I've seen you quite a bit these last two weeks, and I appreciate that, the after-hours. And congratulations, Jim. Well deserved. Thank you for everything you've done for the city. I appreciate it, especially as a vet, fellow vet. Another group of people I'd like to thank, young men and women from the Grand Terrace Football and Cheer, they worked on cleaning the windows at the senior center. And I know those parents that have these, you know, adults, and my son actually grew up with them too, and they do a lot of community service and stuff. But, you know, she called up and asked, what can we do? Director to the senior center, and I think they even played the piano like a, we had somebody in here play the piano yesterday. But they did a good job, and they had a good time doing it. I know the seniors appreciate it. Also, I want to personally thank the Sheriff's Department. We had some residents with some issues, and I called the city manager, and we had Corporal Ruiz come out, and he, you know, took his time, and he talked to the residents there and listened to their concerns, and they really appreciated for him coming out and listening to them. So, thank you, Sheriff Department Captain, for your Corporal Ruiz on there, which pass it on. Like I said, attended the budget workshop here in the community center and then at the senior center. And, you know, city staff, I think you guys did a fine job presentation. You know, you kept it pretty easy to follow, and I appreciate you guys coming out to explain to the community, you know, what your jobs are. And also, it was pretty nice that you got to introduce with some of the community members. Residents got to know who they were, you know, put a face with the name. One good thing, well, it was hot last Saturday, and I got to do the mayor walk and also Senator Leva with Mayor Protem. It was a pretty enjoyable event, even though it was really hot. But I was really impressed with Senator Leva, and we had to ask it, you know, questions and stuff, and I had three questions for her, and, you know, she was really honest and forward on it. And I'm looking forward to, as a council member, you know, voicing our concerns from our residents to her. But she's open-minded, and she takes suggestions, and she says she's followed up on a lot of stuff, and I appreciate all that hard work she's doing, representing our District 20. One thing, coming up, the Fourth of July is coming up, and I asked Pat, City Clerk, and she got me the ordinance on 249. And I'd just like the residents to look at, also, it's on the page of the Grand Terrace website, explains about the fireworks, when you could fire them, also the safety zones. We have a map where you can pull up on the website also, because a lot of Grand Terrace is no fireworks zones and reason, you know, close to the mountains and stuff. Fire prevention, you know, Fourth of July is, you know, to celebrate Independence, but we like to keep it, you know, safe and sane fireworks only, no bottle rockets, you know, please respect other residents. I'm sure the Sheriff's Department will be out in full force on that, but, you know, just please be careful, be safe, and enjoy your Independence on there. But if you have any questions, you look in the Grand Terrace website, and it has ordinance 249, and explains the safety zones and when you could light the fireworks. And one last thing is, just for residents' concerns and safety are soliciting, and a Hawkins license also is on the website. I asked the city clerk if we had any vendors that put in for licenses, right now we have nobody. So if you, if the vendors come to your house and ask, hey, do you have a vendor's license with the city? And they say yes, ask them for the proper paperwork. But, you know, just use, of course, I know you will, but, you know, if somebody says they're from a security department, you know, question them, you know, challenge them. If they're, you know, putting, you know, systems or something, you know, I challenged one guy, and he couldn't, you know, present anything with it. But, you know, just use, just be careful. And we also have children out there, you know, they're asking for, you know, I know all the 501s, I don't think they have the need license, but pretty much I talked to Grand Terrace youth, and they pretty much, when they're doing their sales, they go out there in front of the Stater Brothers. They really don't go door-to-door. And my favorite pet peeve, please license your pet. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to congratulate Jim McNaboe. Well deserved. Not a lot of people know just how much personal sacrifice Mr. McNaboe has made and has benefited this city by all of his works. I really appreciate it. I attended the budget workshop last Tuesday as well, along with the mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilman Hussey. I would say it was a fantastic workshop. I really appreciated the way the new city manager put together his program and the communication media. I wish there would have been a few more people at that one. I didn't get to go to the one last night, but there were about six citizens. Now, saying that, I would say that six citizens is still better than just one, and one citizen can make a difference. So please make sure that you get your information, your feedback back in, because the only way that we know what your desires are in relation to the budget is if that feedback does get returned. And so I thought it was a very good program to be able to make that happen. Also wanted to mention, with the Healthy GT 2014, 2015, considering the goals with the community, safety and disaster preparedness and public safety, would seem to me that we should be able to try to meld some of the Emergency Operations Committee goals as well. Because two very good community assets, and we've been in business for a long time with the Emergency Operations Committee. I know that we are working with them to get them back online. I know that's a great priority, the city manager, and he's welcome to give us any kind of report in relation to that. The only other question I have is, can we look into the irrigation in the Greenbelt area on Honey Ridge? And the only reason why I'm so susceptible, that is, is I built those houses, and that Greenbelt area covers, of course, the big water line that runs between Silverwood and Paris. And it seemed to me that with all this water sacrifice we're doing, that Greenbelt area probably should look a little brown. And I'm just sure it really doesn't, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things I wanted to congratulate Jim on your award, your recognition of a man of distinction. I think that's such a great honor to have, and you certainly have put the work in to be recognized. Congratulations, of course. And Bill, thank you for making the community aware of the fireworks safety and the community mapping and where it's permissible and where it's not. And I want to wish everyone a very happy Independence Day. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Mitchell. Council, Mayor Protem Robles.
Thank you. I attended the League of Cities on a Committee for Housing and Economic Development. We had a briefing on the budget, and that has been pretty widely distributed. The biggest takeaway was the state often has mandates that cities must do, and they were unfunded. And so, there's a gentleman named Michael Coleman who provides revenue figures and tables for us, and we're going to get $55,000 rounded up for mandates that we provided on behalf of the state and that we're not funded. So that's a good takeaway of having a good budget at the state level for the first time in a number of years. The other thing that was brought was, the big thing that we seem to be hearing at every organizational meeting that we attend is affordable housing. One of the assemblymen from Alhambra met with the league, and the league took the position that they were not going to allow the state to decide what number of parking spaces we're going to have in any housing units. The building industry felt that, you know, a lot of seniors don't drive, and therefore, each parking spot costs them $24,000, so they didn't want to do it. And the most interesting thing is they wanted to do is that since the streets and the parking spots in front of homes actually belong to the city, they wanted us to either to regulate, to put stickers, to, you know, those kinds of things. And the league was against it, and all of us also stood firm against it. The other thing is, there is going to be a special session, which is very extraordinary, and it's going to deal with transportation and the many complicated issues of how are we going to fund transportation? And just coming over here on the radio when they're talking about, well, we have a gas tax already, why isn't that covering it? So it's going to be something that we all really have to pay attention to, because we're, it's going to be something that's going to affect us and our pocketbook, so we really have to pay attention, see if it's something we can deal with and accept. Also attended Omotran's meeting, and what we did was, we created an assistant director position, and that is for succession planning. Before I got on the board, they had to terminate someone, and they brought a department head in. So, and because of the tight budgets, that position hadn't been filled, and the gentleman, you know, is pretty close to retirement, so that's what we did at Omotran's. I have to say, Senator Leva came Saturday, and I attended with the mayor and Councilman Hussey. You know, it was hot, and I was, my hands were perspiring, and I thought I did well until I got into the house, and oh my God, that's when you really feel the difference. But, you know, she came from Sacramento, from doing the budget, and came immediately to Grand Terrace. And this was her first walk with the mayor event, and she's going to be doing it in her district. Very responsive to our city, we're very fortunate. Many of us were able to advocate on behalf of the city, including the water folks. And I think, you know, we're going to do very well with that leadership. Also, have been attending some of the alignment issues with schools and community, and one of the people that I met was the director for the United Way. And I set up a meeting with her and our new city manager to kind of get a relationship going. And what they do differently is that corporations fund them, but they want them to actually be the service provider. So we had some very preliminary talks, and they're going to work directly with the city manager without my involvement and bring whatever is appropriate back to the council that might come out of that relationship. The final thing is, I attended a sandbag general assembly, and they had former General Wesley Clark speak. And again, it was about, the theme was affordable housing, about having a strategy county-wide. And he talked about his experiences as a general and during the Cold War, and he talked about how we had a plan for a war that never happened, and now we've kind of loosened up, and he made the- and now we've tightened, loosened up, and he said, he made the, uh, comparison to, to the county, that if we don't have a unified strategy, we will not win the economic war in the county of San Bernardino. So it was a very good takeaway, so I'm finding these very helpful, because it continues to, to pound into you what the themes are, what the needs are, and get my focus, um, as a local elected official. And again, uh, I want to also thank you, uh, Jim Magna Boe, for your service, and, um, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
I attended a couple of meetings on behalf of the city, the first one was the Sandbag Metro Valley Study Session on June 11th. In this study session, we went over grade separation program update and major project status briefing, that, um, talked about grade separations information, and there was also a quarterly major project status briefing. Both of those are available for public review, they're on the Sandbag website, they're very extensive, but it gives you a really good idea of the way that this region is planning for transportation, and how your tax dollars are being spent through the Measure I tax funds. We also looked at status of surplus property, when Sandbag is doing, um, construction projects, and they have to acquire property to do it, there are strips of land that they end up with, that they don't need at the end of the project. Generally, they give first right of, of purchase to the landowner from whom they purchased it, but then after that, they will sell them to others at market price. We looked at the State Route 210 Lane Addition and Baseline Interchange Project, we reviewed funding allocation, and there was a project list of the major, Valley Major Street Program, arterial sub-program for fiscal year 2015, 2016. This is also available on the Sandbag website. There was a, uh, a separate meeting, this is a, um, a discussion of the I-10 and I-15 corridor projects. I'm not part of the committee that is studying those, but all of the board members were sent a summary binder, looks this big. This is where they're actually looking at the idea of HOV lanes or express lanes, express lanes are also considered toll lanes. To my, to my understanding, there had not been a discussion about which way decision would be made on I-10 and I-15, but as I reviewed this summary binder, I, I found some very interesting things that have taken place at this point. Through their discussions, the key issues and findings that this committee discovered was that we cannot build our way out of the congestion problems that we have. And, uh, right away is in existence for only adding two more lanes. Traditional funding would add one lane in each direction on I-10, and there wouldn't be any money left for lanes on I-15. So they wanted to look at optimizing resources, and they looked at express lanes, and the fact that they provide sustainable mobility, revenue needed for improvements, and, uh, the motorists have a choice as to whether they want to take those lanes and pay the toll or not. They looked at right-sized express lane alternative, if it's financially feasible, and, and there's more discussion on what that is. And so the board actions so far, and I'm going to refer to the binder on this. So far, the board actions have been, they had a managed lane workshop in April of 2011, so they've been talking about this for a long time. They had an I-10, I-15 project update for the public in December 2012. They had a stakeholder outreach in February of 2013. They had a toll policy and assumptions discussion on March 2013. They had an equity study and I-10 alternative discussion July 2013. They had I-10, I-15 preliminary financial results on September 2013, and they had an express lanes workshop on October 2013. The board action to date was to continue the study of express lanes on I-10, and they did this in December of 2013. They confirmed public finance delivery, and directed staff to develop an RFP for an I-15, um, paving project. Board action also was to select the express lanes as the local public preferred alternative for I-10. They did this in July of 2014. So in other words, the Sandbag Board in July of 2014 has selected the express lanes as their local preferred alternative, and they have directed staff to continue reviewing that option, and looking at the feasibility of that option. And then the board action that was taken in April of this year confirmed tolling policy and toll revenue policy. Now, they haven't really decided on express lanes, but that is the direction that was given in July of 2014. This, I believe, is also available on the Sandbag website. The other meeting that I attended was the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Advisory Commission on Water Policy. And so as, as a member of this board, do, and we meet quarterly, and we've been receiving a series of reports by member agencies, they give the overviews of the projects and operations going on in their city or for their district. And so this quarter, the presentation was given by the City of Redlands. And we will have, we will continue to have more presentations, in fact, in September, our own Riverside Highland Water Company will be giving their presentation to this body. Another item was the Santa Anna River Conservation and Conjunctive Use Program Update. This is a project that was initially presented to our advisory commission in July of 2013, and since that time, the proposed project elements have been developed. They looked at, or they have, um, removed arundo, and I found out that's a kind of a bamboo that grows in the habitat area of the Santa Anna River. They've, um, done habitat creation and restoration projects for the Santa Anna sucker. This accounts for the savings of 2,000 acre feet per year of water. The water use efficiency savings of 7,439 acre feet annually came from a removal of 1.5 million square feet of turf, and the assistance to water agencies in a switch-to-water budget-based rate structuring, which means that the regional water districts have set budgets for their residents, and if they stay within the budget that's been set for their particular household, and the number of people in their household, they stay within that budget of water use, they have a certain rate. Once they exceed the use of that budgeted amount, their rates go up for the water usage over their particular budget. It's, it's like tiers, but it's a little bit more structured to the residence and the type of home that they have, and the number of residents in their home. They've also created water banks in the watershed, so dry year yield of 60,000 acre feet is, um, is created by this water banking that they do. They create diversified upstream water banks that can be used during the wet years, this, this water is stored in the water banks, and then it's pumped during the dry years. They also gave us a 2015 drought update. Things are dry, and we're low on water. On June 1st, 2015, the first statewide mandatory water use restrictions were enacted in California. The Valley District Board conducted a press conference on that day to inform the public about the drought and what they needed to do, and the presentation was given to the advisory board. Also locally, our Riverside Highland Water Company has sent out pamphlets on the, the kinds of restrictions that we have specific to us in Grand Terrace. And lastly, we had a, an update on what they are now calling the California Water Fix and State Water Project Allocation. This was previously the Bay Delta Conservancy Project, so this is a, a project that's going on up in the San Francisco Bay Area, and it's an effort to, to change or conserve the habitat, but also to fix the way that the water conveyance comes through that area. There's a lot of the, the clean water that ends up going out to the San Francisco Bay, and it doesn't make its way down to the, the southern part of the state. But my understanding is that there are northern areas of the state that count on this Bay Delta area for their water needs as well. And so the governor has declared his determination to make this project happen, hence he's, he's, um, he's been putting a lot of focus in how he communicates this to the rest of the state, and from this point forward, it will become the California Water Fix and State Water Project Allocation. And the project reduces environmental impacts and improves operations to the Bay Delta region that are so crucial to our state's water flow. I, uh, I also attended the walk with Senator Connie Leva. I was really pleased that she chose to come to our community. We had a very nice opportunity to have discussions as we walked through the neighborhoods. We did have good reception by the neighbors whose homes we visited, and she is very receptive to questions. I, I look forward to opportunities to work with her in the future, and opportunities for our community. I want to thank the staff for putting together the budget workshops, I thought they were very well done, and I hope that that's something that we continue in the future. And I think I would be remiss if I did not congratulate Jim Magna Boe, and, his being recognized as a man of distinction, so, congratulations to you, and I will end my report on that. Item F on our agenda is public hearings, we do not have any. Item, excuse me, item E is, is public hearings, item F is unfinished business, we don't have any of those either, so we'll move to new business. Our first item of new business, item 6, is the adoption of a resolution resetting a public hearing relating to refuse rate adjustments. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. See, the microphone got fixed. Um, this is a public hearing to reset the refuse rate adjustments. Back in May, we had a public, excuse me, we had an item here, to, um, look at rate adjustments for our refuse and recycling. Subsequent to that meeting, um, staff was reaching out to BRTech, specifically Vice President Mike Aragorn, at the same time he was reaching out to city staff, um, to discuss that there was actually an error in the rates that were presented to the council in May. And so he did provide us, um, revised, um, rate sheets, um, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. One of the things we also asked him to do was to look at, um, the multifamily housing rates, specifically to incorporate the Household Hazardous Waste Program into those rates, which he has done. Overall, there is an approximate, uh, for 4.85% increase in single-family residential rates, and approximately 13% in commercial rates, which is significantly lower than what we looked at, um, back in May. And to just, um, give the council a brief, um, summary of what is being proposed for our most common rates for single-family residential, it's approximately a dollar, and, um, I can't read that, but it's at the dollar six or dollar eight. Um, the rates are going from 2286, this is really testing my eyesight here, to approximately 2385. And, uh, for the 64 gallon station, here's the rates also, again, it's, um, just over a dollar, as opposed to last time we were looking at about three dollars. These are our most, um, common commercial rate adjustments, or commercial rates, it's the three-yard bend, one, two, and three-week service. Um, if you look at the, uh, proposed rate increase, it's approximately 13%. Then these are the multifamily housing rates, these are new rates, um, these rates are being pulled out of what was formerly commercial rates, and so we're, we've created just a rate for the multifamily housing. So with that, I would, um, recommend that the city council take an action to rescind Resolution 2015-11, which set the public hearing last time we talked about this, and adopt the tax resolution setting the public hearing for the proposed rate adjustments. The public hearing will be August 11th, 2015, that the council adopts the resolution, and staff will undertake the appropriate measures to provide appropriate notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Council have any technical questions for staff? Okay. I will, um, I don't have any requests to speak on this particular item, so I will come back to council for a motion.
I move that we rescind Resolution Number 2015-11, setting forth a proposition to 18 public hearing scheduled for July 28, 2015, at 6:00 PM, and adopt Resolution 2015, setting the proposition to 18 public hearing for proposed new waste and recycle rate adjustments for August 11th, 2015, at 6:00 PM.
I'll second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye, Mayor Protem Robles voted aye, Mayor Magna Boe voted aye.
Thank you. Item number seven is the 2015, 2016 Landscape and Lighting Assessment District. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As indicated, this is the, um, 15, 16 Lighting and Landscape, Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District 89-1 discussion. This item supports goal number one, to ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery. Just to give you some, um, quick background, the, the Assessment District was created pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. We formed an Assessment District 89-1, we subsequently amended it, um, to add some parcels to it, but collectively we refer to it as Assessment District 89-1. So the improvements that we can, or that are authorized under the, the act to incorporate into these assessment districts are improvements such as planting and landscaping, ornamental structures, fountains or statuaries, lighting facilities, construction of curbs and gutters and sidewalks, paving, paving, and electrical irrigation and drainage facilities. Maintenance would include repair, removal, replacement, um, providing for life, growth, and health and beauty of landscaping, meaning, you know, we maintain it, we trim it when needed, we replace it as needed. And then also, it could include, for maintenance, cleaning, sandblasting, and painting of walls for improvements, or graffiti, um, covering graffiti. And then we can also include incidental, incidental expenses, such as preparing the reports, having the engineer and attorneys review it, um, incidentals related to the improvements that are within the assessment district. So these are the various type of items that can be included in the assessment district. The annual engineer's report is prepared for the purposes of determining, based upon those improvements that were included in that assessment district, what the, um, cost is, and how that cost is distributed to the benefiting properties. So at this time, I'd like to present to the, uh, council, the, the assessment district map, it incorporates three areas, and these are the three areas. And as indicated in the council report, the, um, this process with respect to setting the public hearing is very specific as to the order of actions that need to be taken. So at this time, I'm going to ask that the city council, um, make a motion to, uh, adopt a resolution ordering the preparation of plans, specifications, cost estimate, diagram, assessment, and report pursuant to the provisions of Division 15, Part 2 of the Streets and Highway Code of the State of California for proceedings for the annual assessment levy after formation
Any questions of staff at this point? Okay, so I have three recommendations.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
And the first one is, you want us to take them separately?
Yes, the first one, please.
And I do not have any requests to speak, items on this. Councilmember, would anyone like to make a motion?
Our motion to adopt the resolution is center red.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Any, any discussion on part of staff at this point?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to point out the cost of a, is a small assessment district, if you notice in the contingencies, to begin with 13364 canal, legal and engineering. Uh, the legal and engineering is a substantial chunk of money in each one of these items, and I wondered if it was possible for us to be able to combine some portion of this, rather than have a separate cost in each one of them. Uh, is there some kind of benefit in the, the legal and engineering in one of these that can be assumed by maybe the first one, or something? Because it's usually the cost of, usually the, a substantial cost of an assessment district is, is either the formation and/or the legal and, and, uh, engineering costs involved with them.
Director Molina, would you like to respond?
Um, yes, I, I would like to, uh, request that-
Yes, I would like to request that we discuss that under the presentation of the engineer's report, because at this time, we're asking to just order the report. And then also, Susanna Medina with Willdan Engineering is also present in the audience and can assist with those technical questions.
Okay, thank you.
So this item right here is to set the agenda for a public hearing on these items, is that correct?
Yes, well, there are three separate items, and the first resolution is ordering the preparation of the report, and then we'll present the report and go over that, and then the two subsequent actions that are included in the recommendations would then be taken at one time at the conclusion.
Is that agreeable, Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, I just, I guess I'm thinking out loud, because we had talked at one point when the parks issue had to do with an Assessment District, that it might be too small to consider it, and considering these chunks of money, maybe it's not.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the first item. Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Council members Wilson, Hossi, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to the other two, or would you like for us to?
Sure, I can continue with the presentation of the engineer's report, and then also, we can address Councilmember Wilson's question.
Okay, please do. Thank you.
The engineer's report does contain these items that are required to be contained in the report per the act. There's a discussion as far as the plans and specifications, which discusses the description of the improvements, the method of apportionment, which determines the proportional cost for each benefiting parcel in the method of calculation. Then there's this estimate of the improvement cost, which is the section that Councilmember Wilson was inquiring about. Then it also includes the diagram, and then the assessment roll, which lists each assessor's parcel number that would be assessed and the amount of the assessment. The report takes into consideration the operation and maintenance of the Assessment District and those improvements, and then determines, based upon the revenue that we've taken in, or the expenditures that we've had over the last fiscal year, what our anticipated cost would be for the upcoming fiscal year. Based on the engineer's estimate, the cost of operations and maintenance would equal the assessment currently levied and collected. And so, the engineer's recommendation is to continue to assess the exact same amount next fiscal year that we have this year, so there'd be no change in the coming fiscal year. The total fiscal impact is $12,121.44, which is reimbursed to the city through the Assessment District. Now, specifically with Councilmembers Wilson's question, this had to do with stamp pages 104 and 105, where the Section 3 of the Estimate of Improvement Cost lists for each of the benefiting areas what our costs are. And legal and engineering is separated. I think it's appropriate to continue to separate them, and Ms. Medina, I'm not sure if you wanted to, Susanna, specifically speak to the question of Councilmember Wilson, whether these two costs should be combined or continued separate, to be separate.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and residences of Grand Terrace. It's an honor to be here. This is my first year at this city. I've been doing Assessment Districts, administration formations for 10 years, and this is a question that it's more, it depends on what the goal of the city is? I'm sorry, I thought I did. Susanna Medina, thank you. It depends on what the goal of the city is. A lot of times, cities want the items to be as, the line items to be more specific to the costs in order to be more transparent to the residences of residents of the city. Sometimes the amounts are insignificant, that combining them wouldn't be a problem. So it's just a matter of preference.
If I understood your question right, Councilmember Wilson, you were wondering if there was maybe some cost savings if we were spreading that, the work across the three, and not just combining the cost in one light item, but is there any benefit to having, do you want to explain?
Let me jump in here. I look at this as just pure dollars and cents. The 25 percent of the cost of the $12,000 total assessment is in engineering and legal. And of course, you're not responsible for the legal, I don't think, but in the engineering aspect, once the spreadsheet basically is laid down, I've got to think that that's just kind of a duplicate from that point forward, or we're allocating money, you know, for one to the other compared. I mean, I'm looking at energy costs for street lighting, for example, on Forest City Phase Two, $697, but it costs a couple of hundred bucks to be able to get there. So what I'm looking for is some kind of a cost savings based on the same situation, but just kind of postage stamped into each item. Is there a way for us to be able to reduce our costs of initiating these things, and then on a go-forward basis, can we also count on some savings once we've laid down this concept, and we don't have to reinvent it again?
I think these costs are more based on actual costs of how much it's costing the city to pay for engineering services and for legal services. I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question exactly, but hopefully I'm answering it.
May I ask if these numbers were looked at as a total effort for the city and then assigned at a rough estimate per phase?
No, they were specific for each tract.
Okay, so I think Mr. Wilson's question is, if we were to combine them as one effort per tract, would there be a cost reduction in that work?
It would have to be separated per tract, by, for each tract, instead of combining and then allocating, just because the way Assessment Districts work, the amount of the cost has to be allocated to each tract, depending on how much each tract benefits.
So we're asking if you do more than one, can we have a discount? Just break it down.
Well, Mayor Protem Robles.
Working in special districts and doing Assessment Districts is, you have to show a nexus between the benefit and what the fee is. So the only way to do that is it has to be track by track. So it's not something that we can do a global fix. And the other thing is, you've already done this Assessment District, and you're just moving it forward without any increase. So it seems, City Attorney, that we were to tinker with this, and we're going to tinker with last year, too.
That's correct. Each tract has to be looked at separately, just because the parcels are being assessed based on their specific costs.
Mayor, if I might?
City Manager?
Yes. You know, as you, as we look at the total costs, and we look at the various costs for each different parcel, one of the things that I've discussed with staff is, I think as Mayor Protem mentioned, these numbers are pretty consistent from the previous years. So what we can do is we can go back, because we provide the information to the engineer, and they come up with the engineer's costs. So we can go back through this for next year and try and work out the way if there is a standard form that we can apply across the board for legal services. And I think it's, is there a way to do economy of scales? So we will ask that question within, when we do the report next year. But this hasn't been increased over a number of years. I'm sure costs have fluctuated, so we need to do that examination to really look at this.
Okay. Any more questions of staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, at this point, I would ask the council to take further actions on items two and three, to adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report, and to adopt the resolution of intention to provide for an annual levy and collection of assessment, and the public hearing would be held on July 14, 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Mr. City Attorney?
Sandra, again, the date of the public hearing? I thought you originally said August.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, let me check that.
Yes, it's August 11th.
It's August 11th?
Yeah. Got me a little worried, because 45-day.
Okay, public hearing would be set for August 11th.
On Section 9, on page 115, it's, July 14th is the public hearing. The public hearing for the rate adjustment, the item we just heard, was, is August 11th. The public hearing for this particular item is July 14, 2015. There's no increase to the rates, and so it's not a Prop 218 type of hearing where we have to apply the 45-day notice. So the next hearing is July 14, 2015, for this item. The August 11th hearing date was for the rate adjustment on the previous item we just heard.
Are we set on that?
I assume.
You assume? You'll review that, and if there's a change, we'll hear about that?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is, we're looking for a motion from council?
Motion for approval.
Okay, so you're motioning to adopt resolution?
The resolution approving the engineer's report, adopt the resolution of intention to provide for an annual levy and collection of assessment.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes, five ayes. Councilmembers Hossi, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor Magna Bo voted aye.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight. And that is approval of the Information System Support Agreement renewal with the City of Loma Linda. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Cynthia Fortune from the Finance Department. This staff report supports goal number four, to develop and implement successful partnerships by working collaboratively with other public sector agencies to facilitate the delivery of services benefiting youth, seniors in our community. And so this partnership is with the City of Loma Linda. On May 13th of 2014, the City of Grand Terrace entered into an agreement with the City of Loma Linda for the provision of information system services. Prior to that, we had a full-time management information specialist who retired from the city effective April 30, 2014. Over the past year, the services that IT has provided included the upgrade of a new phone system, which we are currently working to get a staff directory on. We've got a new and exchange server. We moved from cityofgrandterrors.org to grandterrors.ca.gov. We've replaced and rebuilt city staff personal computers, and we purchased a new server for the phone system. In addition to that, City of Loma Linda is actually charging us half, half of what it cost that full-time MIS, Management Information Specialist, so we do show savings. The City of Loma Linda is also taking the same agreement to their city council tonight. The Assistant City Manager Conrad Bolovich is presenting that to his city council in Loma Linda as we speak. However, we do have a representative from the City of Loma Linda, Kelly Coder, if you want to ask him any IT-related questions. In the event that either city council requests minor administrative revisions to the agreement, council authorization is requested for the city manager to make such revisions to the agreement and sign it on behalf of the city. However, should these revisions be substantive, we will bring this back to the city council for approval. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Does council have any technical questions of staff? Councilmember Hossi.
Fortune, you said that we already purchased a new phone system?
Yes.
And that came with a warranty also on that new phone system that we purchased?
Yes, that comes with a warranty.
So would Loma Linda be doing any work on that, you know, as far as any technical work, as far as sending out it, you know, for warranty repair?
Well, we purchased an Avaya phone system. Avaya is providing the first-year warranty maintenance on that. So if there's any issues, we would be calling them directly. Or we can also be calling our IT Loma Linda, and they help us, yeah, get that.
So on that phone system, we have a shelf with the analog and digital cards, or, because usually when you call technical service, they'll, you know, they'll work on that, they, you know, they want you to remove cards, and so I don't know what, what type of phone system do we have? Gave me the name, but is it all digital or analog, or do you?
It's an Avaya digital phone system, Avaya.
All right.
Kelly, would you like to elaborate on the phone system?
Hi, I'm Kelly with the City of Loma Linda. The phone system is actually an IP over Ethernet phone system, so all your voice is going through the IP, through the switch, through the network. As far as analog lines go, we have a couple for faxing. We have one for the, the security, the indoor security. But like, like you're asking about the cards and whatnot, there's like a PRI card in there inside the actual Avaya box, and that is what basically tells the data which way to route, and then that goes into the switch, and then from the switch, it goes out to all the different phones.
So is the T1 circuit is at Loma Linda, or are we supplying the T1 circuit on?
No, the T1 circuit is coming through TW Telecom, and, no, TW Telecom.
Okay. And how much was that phone system, the purchase on there?
I don't have the numbers offhand. I believe it was actually purchased before I came onboard. Cynthia might have that.
Councilmember Hossi, off the top of my head, I don't. However, we can provide you that information.
And you also said that with Loma Linda supplying the service, there's pretty much half the what I was having a staff onboard 24/7?
That is correct. If you look at the agreement, packet page 127, yeah, shows you the annual yearly maintenance that they're asking for is $30,811, and there are some hardware replacements that still need to be done in City Hall, one time of $25,000.
I did look at that, page 127, you know, I was just concerned on $2,600 a month for an average of 20 hours per week. Correct?
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Am I reading it wrong?
I didn't hear you, Councilmember.
It's averaged $2,600 per month for the service, for the main service, yearly based on average for 20 per week? 20 hours per week, and it's coming up to $2,600 a month, correct?
Yes, but from experience in our past year, they're averaging between 30 and 40 hours a week.
Okay, so we're not going to get charged anything extra if he goes over this allocate?
No, they don't.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually use this system professionally for work, and there's a feature that I think we may have that we're not taking advantage of, that when a voicemail message is left for us, we can receive an email alert that has the recording on it. Am I correct on that? Is that something that we can, that we can set up for our voicemail boxes?
And we currently do have that system that's been set up online, so if we're not implementing it in everyone else, we certainly, we certainly can't do that.
Yes, okay, thank you so much.
I believe it should be set up already. If you're not receiving the voicemails, you might want to try recording your name into the actual voicemail on the phone. That takes care of a lot of the issues. Also, the staff directory is set up also, but if your name is not recorded into the actual system, it won't pick it up when people search for it.
So Kelly, what we can do is we can, we can go back tomorrow and check each, each of the phones, ensure that that's set up. We'll do that.
I believe past staff had actually set some of that up for council members, so maybe there was a misstep. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your report. I have no request to speak forms in front of me, so I will open and close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion.
A motion to go with the recommendation of the staff to approve the attached information system support agreement with the City of Loma Linda.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes. Five ayes. Council members Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNabbel voted aye.
All right, thank you. Item nine, is there adoption of the fiscal year 2015-16 budget?
Mayor Protem, Cynthia Fortune again from the Finance Department. This staff report supports city goal number one, to ensure fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. Tonight, we are going to request that city council adopt resolution adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2015-16. To provide city council with a recap, on May 26th, when we first submitted the proposed budget, we had presented council with revenues of 4 point, almost 4.5, and expenditures close to that, showing a surplus of about $897. On the following council meeting, city manager proposed additional revenue enhancements, which included dog license fees, franchise fees, and residual receipts, raising the revenue, our general fund revenue to roughly 4.58 million. In addition to that, he also requested additional expenditures, increasing the city council travel account by 4,000, return of the executive secretary position and the admin intern position, increasing total revenues to 4.58 million, and increasing the surplus from $897 to $932. In addition to that, as stated in the staff report, the summary cost by department is shown on the screen. As you can see, our biggest departments are Community Development with 1.2 million and Public Safety with 1.6. Again, this is the general fund expense budget broken down by department. In addition to revenue and expenditure appropriations, city council also approved four items, the online permitting system, the Minitrack, that is our agenda processing upgrade, a laserfish system for records retention, and city council chambers upgrades totaling $120,000. In addition to those requests, at our last meeting, we requested the establishment of a community benefits fund totaling $25,000, and I stated that these funds will be used to implement a city program that would provide grant funding for community events, youth programs, community fee waivers, and also be used as an economic development tool for small business development in the city. What the city manager will be doing, will be coming back for council approval to provide guidelines as to how communities, community programs, youth programs, or businesses can apply for these, and for every request that is going to be made, we will also either be returning that to council unless council sees fit that the city manager is authorized to do that. But our main concern is to develop the program, come up with the guidelines for city council to review and approve. In addition to that, city council had requested, through the use of traffic safety funds, that we purchase a license plate reader system for one of the patrol cars in the city, and this will not be using general fund funds, that we will be using traffic safety funds. And as I stated up there, traffic safety funds are fines and forfeitures collected from any person charged with a misdemeanor, and these funds can only be used for traffic control devices, equipment, and supplies for traffic law enforcement and traffic accident So if the city council were to approve, all that was presented to them in the last few weeks regarding the budget, the effect would reduce our contingency from an original 2.1 million, when we made that estimate during mid-year, to 1.6.5 million. In addition to that, as stated by the mayor, we held two budget workshops, and we presented each department's budget, and we provided an overview of each detailing our revenues and expenditures. During that budget, we requested, we provided the core priorities of each department, and we requested attendees to actually prioritize those core functions. So what we'd like to do is just present to the residents and city council the results of those prioritization. So if we start with city council, and, and I know it's tiny, but what we were trying to focus on is, based on how the residents prioritized core functions, further to the right, we listed the top three. First one being that the city council should establish priorities for the city, represent the community's point of view, and allocate resources for the budget. I'd just like to remind everyone that all the functions are important to the city, and this is what residents thought should be city council's priority. We also had some comments written on, on those papers, and the comments that we had written said that the city council should set the vision, hire the right people to implement it, and oversee the implementation. From my point of view, I believe our city council is doing just that, and we will continue to do so. Now for the city manager, the top three priorities that residents chose was that he provide city administration, provide oversight for the city's, city's resources, and act as the successor agency executive director. And one comment that was written was that the senior citizens program can be overseen by another to allow the city manager to spend more time on typical duties. For the city clerk, based on what we've received, again, when I should have mentioned it earlier, priority one is blue, second priority is red, and the third is yellow. So based on that, when we, based on the results, this is saying that the city clerk should concentrate on supporting city council and city manager, and conducting local elections as her top priority, maintain records of city council meeting, and have a records management program. And since city council has approved a laserfish system for her, she will be able to be more efficient in her records management. Okay, for the city attorney, their first, everyone voted that his first priority should provide legal services, act as legal advisor at city council meetings, also for the successor agency, and do contract reviews. For childcare, she has three programs, of which are all a priority, but to provide quality care for preschool being the top, before and after care, and continue the Tiny Tots program. Okay, and the comments we got for the childcare program is that this is a critical and valuable service, and that the city should do what it can to keep the program running at current or improved levels. Now, there are several sections in the Community Development Department, and these are the priorities that the residents showed. General plan administration, enforcing state, local land use laws, and process redevelopment applications. For code enforcement, their priority was to enforce business license administration, respond to code inquiries, and respond, respond to animal control complaints. For public works maintenance, the main priority that residents chose is street and pothole repair, followed by traffic signal maintenance, and parks and storm drain maintenance. We also had some comments that we wanted to share with both council and the community. Great parks make this community desirable. Other activities need to be completed, but we ought, that should be ought, not out, I'm sorry. We ought to be thinking about greatness, not just adequacy. For public works engineering, the priority is capital improvements for streets, land development, and capital improvements for parks. And we had comments that along with private donations, the city should seek public funds for the dog park, the skate park, and the Blue Mountain Park. For finance, the priorities are the preparation of the budget, monitor that same budget, and provide accounts payable functions to those that provide services for the city. So for the fire department, the core function overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly voted was the timely response to emergencies, emergency medical services, and rescue operations. And finally, for the sheriff's department, the core functions chosen by priority was to maintain oppressions, to reduce criminal activity, to respond to requests for public safety services, and to partner with the community, community to ensure safe neighborhoods. So in summary, when we request that city council adopt the annual budget for fiscal year 2015-16, I just want to remind council that you will be adopting citywide revenues, which is found on packet page 141, of 9.7 million, citywide expenditures of 9.6 million. So this is total, all the funds, the fixed assets, on packet page 129 of 120,000. And the additional requests, which was the establishment of a community benefit fund, and the purchase of a license plate reader system camera, both 25,000 and 22,000 respectively. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Thank you, Director Fortune. Does council have any technical questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. Cynthia, can you, can you tell us how many people in total participated in this survey?
How many residents total?
Yeah.
Twelve. So each resident's portion is about 8%?
Yeah. Okay. All right. And then, I have a question. Oh, what is the balance of our, our fund 17 for the, the traffic safety fund? I'm sorry.
That's all right. I, I'll find it.
So that's page 13 of the presentation.
Yeah, but you were looking for the fund balance.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes. So if I can direct city council to packet page, packet page 141, and 142, and if you go down to fund 17, Boys' Traffic Safety Fund, and we will go straight across, in 1213, the fund balance was 46,000. No, I'm sorry, we're on the wrong page. I apologize. Packet page 137, please. Okay, so the fund balance, on June 30th, 2014, is 36,504. We are projecting to receive 10,000 in revenues this current year, and we're projecting to spend 5,200, which will give us a fund balance of 41,000 by the end of June. We are projecting $18,000 in revenue this year, and if you can see that 22,000 is the item that we are requesting approval for, so if that is approved, we will project a year-end balance of 37,000 by the end of 2016.
Can follow you across here.
Yeah, all the way across. Does that answer your question, councilmember Mitchell?
I think pretty much. Let me have a peek at this real quick. Okay, see how, where we're going. Okay. All right, thank you for that. And then I also have another point, question on page, oh my gosh, I don't know which page it is, I don't think it's numbered, but the city clerk, yep. It's the city clerk priorities page. What is the difference between maintain records of city council meetings and record management? Is that not kind of all-inclusive when we say maintain records of city council meetings? Or is that just overall record?
Overall records. Our city clerk is a records management person, so she keeps not only the records of the council meeting, contracts, insurance, forms, yeah. She is the holder of all our public records.
I'm just kind of thinking records management would be inclusive of city council meetings, but I guess maybe not. I don't know the, the way that this position is broke down, so apparently not. Okay, that, that concludes my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Wilson?
I did have one question. We've had this discussion before, in, in the childcare aspect of the budget. Have we ever been able to determine what the breakdown is so far as the money that is attributable to insurance for the childcare versus if the city was not in the childcare business, what our insurance would look like?
Councilmember Wilson, we can certainly provide detail to you on that, and, and you're looking at general liability and workers' compensation, because those are the two biggest insurance that we provide.
Yeah, it makes sense just to take the biggest chunks. Obviously, we don't want to finite this situation to where it's a diminishing return.
We will do that on a report backlog to you, as to the breakdown on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Where would be any...
Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry. Where would be any Quimby Act revenues? Where would those be found on this?
That would go into the park development fund.
What number? Okay, 13?
Yes, that is correct. And so if you would also like to see the current fund balance of that fund, I will refer you back again to page 137, and if you look at fund 13, all the way across, provide you an idea of what the projected fund balance would be at the end of...
We have about $225,000.
Correct.
Sylvia, can you repeat your question? I don't think I heard it.
Oh, there, we, we collect fees, I guess, on new development, and it goes into the park development fund, and I, in discussions with city manager, that had never really been highlighted to me, so I was wondering where it was then.
Thank you for repeating. I didn't hear it at first. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Wilson?
Just one in relation to the park fund now. Is it your understanding that the park fund is administrated the way that the mapping shows it, or is it, is it a, truly a park fund? Because I know what the state mandates say, you have to provide, for example, a Quimby Park fee, or an equal, now, which you can, you can provide property, you can provide improvements, but you still have to satisfy a, a Quimby Park circumstance. Our park fee, or our park costs have been shown to actually spread all the way out into open areas and things that aren't really even considered parks. So I'm confused as to what, when we, when we talk about a park fee, per se, in order to be able to encourage parks within the city, I would hope that those don't get diminished by, you know, the, the fee itself doesn't get diminished by the cost of some, you know, greenbelt area somewhere that really wouldn't ever be considered a park other than to a dog.
Mr. City Manager, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, and so the Quimby fees are for, are for park and open space, and so it really is, once the fees are collected, it's really up to the council to enforce that by implementing new parks, and you can call them active or passive park. Green spaces, you know, passive areas. So you can, you, you can come up with a, ideally, a park and open space plan, and then, based on that plan, you could actually set your Quimby fees in terms of what you're trying to charge, because what these new developers are either buying into your existing system, or they're helping you... you maintain your ratio of parks, residents to green space.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I have no request to speak forums, and I see nobody making a motion to go get one. So I will close public comment and bring this item back to council for consideration
May I ask an additional question before we have that motion? At what point were we going to have the discussion around the 25,000 that were, that would be at a future council meeting?
Yes, Councilmember Mitchell, my goal would be to bring that back to you, probably late July, a staff report outlining potential program guidelines that the council would then, would make the determination on the method and how that's distributed, whether there's an application process, if it's done quarterly, if it's done on a regular basis. That would really come back in that staff report, completely outline the policy that the council will adopt. So tonight, your action really is to appropriate the money in the budget, but none of that will be spent before the regulations and the guidelines come before the council.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I wanted to move the item and then possibly discuss, sit down for a second. I'll move adoption of resolution 2015, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2015-2016. I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to say that we switch city managers at a really awkward time when we're going through our budget. And in the past, what I used to do was I used to enter my own numbers, and I didn't do that because, you know, I really am confident that, you know, with staff, that we're getting the numbers. So it took me a little bit of time to understand when you didn't have the fund balance, how we were going to make it if we just had $895. So looking at this is that we have revenues coming in of roughly 4.5, and we're spending on that, and we're continuing to carry over fund balance. So for the first time in a number of years, we're carefully stabilizing ourselves. Now, we're stabilizing ourselves given that we still have cut and continue to keep cuts. We have staff working four days a week. There are no merit increases, is that correct? No cost of livings. And so I'm comfortable with being very cautious and moving forward with, you know, what kind of recovery we're in, and that we're going to look at year, mid-year, at what kind of flexibility we have. I'm very happy with you taking the helm. I'm very comfortable that as we move forward, that we have continuing of capable management. And this is going to be an ongoing process as we get out of this bad economy. The other thing is, the 25,000 I thought was going to be just for youth, but, you know, I'll see whatever the pleasure of the council is when you bring it back, if we're going to, what kind of focus we're going to have. And just really just saying that, you know, it seems like we're not in an emergency situation. We still have reduced services, but we're functioning, and I'm very comfortable with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell, did you have a comment?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I am very pleased that we are stabilizing as a community financially, and I think we've made some nice improvements, or laying the groundwork for some nice improvements in our chamber, council chambers, and within the work equipment that we're providing in our staff. And I would like to, I don't know if this, this is probably an awkward time to bring this up, but maybe look at some sort of fund to recognize our staff. We can't give merit increases or the cost of living increases, but maybe we can set some monies aside, a pool of funds, so that we can do some staff recognitions, or maybe even bring lunches in, that sort of thing, to thank our staff for the hard work they do. I think oftentimes, we just expect it because it's your job, but it's also nice for us to say thank you, and maybe we can even be included, maybe not together as an entire council, but one at a time to come in and sit and have lunch with you all, and thank you, one person to person, and one to eight or 10, or whatever the ratio is now, and just say thank you. So maybe not the appropriate time, but maybe that $25,000 can also look at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Wilson.
I'd like to say I agree wholeheartedly with Mayor Protem Robles and her comments. And I'd also just like to mention, for the city manager's benefit, I guess it's not really unfortunate necessarily, but if we look at our five-year projection, there's been a great deal of discussion on the internet in relation to our now balanced budget, and looking into the future, what it's going to look like in five years, and how that's going to be, you know, taken care of. We know where we are with numbers at this point, and I've said this before, that a budget is something that you take a picture of at that point, and that's what you know. But you'll also notice that if you look at the various line items and you compare them all the way through the five years that we've forecasted, that the predominant line item that leads us into a negative at this point that we're anticipating is our sheriff's deal. It is in the range of $323,000 difference over a five-year period. And we know, because we asked and we received the information, that it is 65% to 70% of cost of living. So while we cannot provide a cost of living incentive for our own people, we are stuck with something right now. And we know that we are, you know, analyzing back and forth about how our sheriff coverage, whether it's adequate or not adequate and so on, based on previous cuts. But, you know, it just seems a shame that there isn't some way for us to be able to negotiate that circumstance without losing protection. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hesse.
I agree with Mayor Protem on that, and I also, you know, thank you, staff, for all your hard work. Councilmember Mitchell said, you know, it is nice, you know, maybe we could have a luncheon or something, what, you know, appreciation. But also, Mr. Wilson, I agree too, you know, I would say like, in the horizon, you know, that is expense that's going to keep going up as our sheriff's department. That is something we have to look into. You know, maybe we can negotiate something on there. Unfortunately, yeah, the cost of insurance keeps going up, that's out of our hands. Their cost of living, you know, cost of equipment, they just got new patrol cars. It'd be nice, like what we just agreed on, to have the camera, the license plates, that County of Samford, you know, should, you know, supply that on every one of those vehicles, which shouldn't have to come to the city. But, you know, we want to make our residents safe, and it's going to cost us $22,000 to do that, advise, you know, one less sheriff. And we're trying to do what we can with limited budgets that we have to support the residents. But, you know, I think we really need to focus on that and look at what we can do and can't do. You know, it's almost like your hand's tied, you have to have the shares. But is there something that we could look into, maybe the, like you said, the cost? There's got to be some kind of giveaway on there. If we use them, like I said, when the corporal came out, it was the first time I seen the corporal out, then I seen the sergeant at the mayor and senator's walk. They were also with the two volunteers. But, you know, I think it was mentioned one time too, the reserves, you know, the reserves come up here, so they get their hours, if we could do something like that. The citizen patrol is a great, you know, resource. But, you know, there's got to be something else, you know, I think the reserves might help us out a lot. But, yeah, we really do have to maintain, we really have to look at that sheriff's budget, you know. I'm 100% for the sheriff's department, I'm 100% to protect the residents up here. You know, like Mr. Wilson said, I agree 100% on what he said about that, you know, that's going to be our, I want to say demon, but it's going to be something that we've really got to focus on to maintain that budget on there. Now, I don't know what you do, they're already guaranteeing 4.5%, you know. We're looking at the development, hopefully that will come through, but that's still, you know, years out. Until we get to the end, you know, we're going to have that development. That's not 100% guarantee on that development either. You know, we can't do a what is, like, you know, we balance our own budget at the houses, whatever. There's always something's going to come up. But staff, I appreciate, you know, the hard work that you do. This budget, as far as being new city council member, you know, is really self-explanatory, easy to follow. I don't ask questions if I, you know, I just, I appreciate you guys' hard work. I know I always say it, but, you know, it does go notice, you know, we're noticing. Balancing the budget, you know, helping our city, you know, the residents, I know they appreciate it too. So everyone I talk to, you know, they're happy, like the mayor mentioned, that we have a budget surplus, but, you know, it was 2. something, now it's 1.6. But as long as we, I like not deficit spending, as long as we're in the positive, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll say, I agree, we do need to have discussions about what we will be doing to afford our sheriff's contract, because the public safety is very important, but it also looks like it could be set to just outpace any of the growth that we have over the years. It's something that we really need to discuss.
So we have a motion in a second. If you would, please vote. Motion passes. Five ayes. Councilmembers Hesse, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNabbal voted aye. Thank you. Our last item is city manager communications. Mr. City Manager?
I have none at this time, and I did want to say that regarding the budget, we will be returning to the council for a first quarter report in October, and that will give you a true picture of how we finished out the year, and then we'll go into the mid-year. And I just wanted to remind the council that one of the purposes for doing a five-year projection is to really have the policymakers understand that we need to stay focused on the issues. And where the expenditures are real, we put those projections in. The revenues are somewhat conservative because we don't, we don't really know how they're going to pan out. We'll have a better picture for you in October when we return, in terms of how we finished off for the year. And then based on those, we'll bring forward, if it's a more positive outlook, we'll bring that forward to the council to make some adjustments.
Thank you. All right, thank you to all those of you who are here tonight, those of you that turned in. Thank you to my colleagues for your discussion. We will be adjourning. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 14th, 2015, at 6:00 PM, right here in this room. Agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. We are adjourned.